Good evening. I would like to call to order the West Mifflin Area School District Regular Board Meeting is held in the West Mifflin Borough Building Council Chambers, 1020 Lebanon Road. West Mifflin PA. Meeting begins at 7:00 PM. Opening exercises. Pledge to the flag.
(Applause). Mr. Esper, roll call.
Aher.
Here.
DeSenzoe.
Donahoe.
Here.
Engler.
Here.
Mattis.
Here.
Squires.
Here.
Yuhas.
Here.
Kostalnik.
Here.
And Blazevich.
Here.
Two presentations, Dr. Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before the student board representatives give their monthly report for this evening, I do have two gifts for them on behalf of the school board and also the administration. So I want to thank you for the, um, good gift this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, it's much appreciated, and I thank you for your great attendance.
(Applause).
So, as the year is coming in, we're kind of slowing down with everything that we're doing. So all we've got on this report is student council. A new council was just voted and approved for the 2023-2024 school year. And then the senior end of the year events, we have May 12th is the prom, of course, and the seniors' last day of school. May 22nd is the practice at 8:00 AM, also followed by senior awards at 6:00 to 8:00 PM. May 23rd is another graduation practice, 8:00 AM, and then after that, we're going to hold our senior picnic up at the high school stadium, I'm pretty sure. And then 23rd graduation is 6:30 PM on high school. I think that's actually the 26th, isn't it?
I think it's the 26th.
26th, yeah. Yeah. 26th is graduation. And then we just want to say thank you guys for always having us and always being welcome to us.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're trying to get out of here early with that 23rd, right? Thank you.
(Applause).
That concludes tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Solomon. Three addendum items. Mr. Sol.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have four addendum items for the evening under six. Board Secretary Business Manager Report, under A, number seven, permission to advertise for invitation for bids for updating in the replacement of the high school LGI rooms equipment. Under nine, district operations, increase the lifeguard salary rate to $14 an hour. And under 10, we have two student activities, one field trip going to Heinz History Center and one going to, uh, partner up Super Day.
Do I have a motion to add the addendum items to the agenda?
Motion, second.
Motion by Mrs. Engler, second by Mrs. Kostalnik. Roll call.
Aher.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostalnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
We'll add those items to the agenda. Before hearing of the citizens, public comment. In order to speak at this time, the following must be met. Must be a West Mifflin Whittaker or Duquesne resident. The matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels. Please direct comments to the board president and/or superintendent. Remarks are limited to three minutes. If you have a question on the agenda, we will attempt to ask, answer those questions as we cover that part of the agenda. And please state your address when we call you up.
All right, so before we begin public comment, I'd just like to say a couple of things. I know that there are a lot of speakers here tonight for the same topic. I want to address any misinformation that may be out there. The board certainly is appreciative for the distinctive service that distinction, service with distinction that Sergeant Diservo has provided to the district. Just to be clear, there is a contract offer on the table to consider or to continue Sergeant Diservo's employment. Sergeant Diservo is not a member of the district's bargaining, teacher's bargaining unit. Beyond that, though, the board is unable to offer any comment on this as it is a personnel matter, which is subject to potential litigation. So obviously, members of the public are free to express their opinions, but the board will not be engaging in any dialogue or discussion back and forth on this matter.
Thank you. Sergeant Diservo?
Yes, sir, thank you. I just want to start off with, I've been with the district for, going on 20 years, and I want to say thank you because it has been a true privilege to be a junior ROTC instructor. I started the program over 20 years ago, and I loved every bit of it. I loved the kids, I loved the families, I loved the opportunities that we created. We changed lives and made a huge difference in our district. For 20 years, we've always made our district look good. We've always highlighted the positive kids and the things that we've done, and I've loved every minute of it. Unfortunately, after serving 21 years in the United States Air Force active duty and 19 years, going on 20 years here in the district, this is the most offended I've ever felt with 40 years of service. And the reason why is I have a 27th April 2021 letter signed by the superintendent and approved by the school board for an early retirement incentive, which was approved and when I was, I was actually asked to take part with the incentive. I didn't like seek it out, somebody, I was sought out for it. And it was about the timing that I was going to retire anyway. So yes, I did apply for it. After I applied for it, it was approved. I met with the superintendent and I wanted to do a one-year contract. My contract runs out on 30 June of this year, 2023. My intent was to sign a one-year contract so that I can help, help hire two new instructors coming in with the intent of helping them transition so that we can continue the success of the program. It is a huge learning curve, so my being here with two new instructors would help with the success of the program and a very successful transition. When I received the new proposed contract, the one item in the contract clearly states, and this is my disagreement, that disagreement supersedes all other oral and written agreements, which means that if I was to sign this contract, the ERI goes away, I will not be able to apply for it because it goes away. It supersedes the previous contract. I was very offended by that. If, if the answer was no, you're not entitled to the ERI. If the answer is no, it should have been done at the beginning. I'm a teacher. I, I'm a professional staff member. I've always been. I do the same thing that every teacher does in that building. I'm the first one there and the last one to leave. I work 12, 14-hour days. I'm not saying that to complain. I say that because I absolutely love what I do. As a professional employee, it was offered to me and I just took, I, I signed it like everybody else, and now it's being taken away. I truly, sincerely want to come back for one more year. The support behind me, the reason why they're here is because I'm being honest with them and telling them I want to come back next year, but under these terms, it's very unfair. I feel it's very unfair, and, and I don't feel it's right. So I want to tell you that it's been a privilege to be here. I love being here and I really want a one-year contract, but I feel like the signed agreement was approved by the school board and that new contract takes it away. I teach my kids to be leaders. I tell them, if I'm a sales manager and I say, if you sell a million dollars worth of products from 1 January to 30 November, and we're going to give you a $500 bonus for Christmas, if the sales team sells a million dollars of products based on the terms, you get, you get the $500 bonus. If you don't get the bonus, it's a breach. How can, how can a leader, how can leaders stand there and say, okay, we promised you this, now we're going to take it away? It just sends a bad message. And the other thing is that I love West Mifflin. This makes our school district and this makes our community look bad. When this is gotten to public, it just looks bad. It looks like we're not taking care of our employees. Dedicated employees.
Thank you. Do you want to have a call?
No.
Jake Bradish?
My name is Jake Bradish, and my address is 109 North Gate Drive in West Mifflin. And I would like to thank for you all to take the time out to invite us here for this. But I want to read something real quick, if I may. It's an award that I stood here in February and gave to Sergeant Diservo. I want to read it one more time. It's only about three, it's only about three sentences for some of the people who weren't here. Sergeant Diservo won the Voice of Democracy Teacher of the Year Award. It was presented to him, and underneath it, it says, "West Mifflin Area High School." And this is what it states on there. It is, as an exemplary of sincere appreciation for your exceptional leadership ability as an esteemed educator of American youth. Your dedication in promoting the Voice of Democracy program is highly commendable and should serve to awaken in others an awareness of the constant need to cherish our young Americans, for they are our future. Presented to him by the Department of Veteran of Foreign Wars, United States of America." And it was, it was by our post. He's a veteran. He's probably one of the few that would lean on that as a crutch. I'm here to say, we're a family. We're all here for West Mifflin. So are you.[598.32][598.32](Applause). That's my comment to the board. This is about West Mifflin and the kids. We're all family. Do we get along? No, we don't. Do we have crazy family members? We sure do. I know, I speak for myself. But I just want to point up, point out that we're a family, and I can't see our veteran in our family be disrespected and some taken away from them. It's just not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.[635.16][635.16](Applause). Henry Manella?
Henry Manella, I live at 456 Dennison Drive, West Mifflin. Good evening, school board members. My name is Henry Manella. I'm here as a graduate, a combat veteran, and I'm a parent of two kids that helped participate in the West Mifflin Air Force Junior ROTC program. In my opinion, the ROTC program is not just getting kids ready to, ready for military life, it's getting them ready for life in general. And we know how life is nasty place out there, but Sergeant, his program gets the kids ready for life. It teaches leadership. Being a combat veteran of two tours in Iraq, I respect and honor what Sarge does, and I feel it's sad that this school board will not let a com, not let a veteran go out on his own terms. And I lived in this district for over 30 years. Let's not make another bad decision by the school board. I'm not going to get into details about the bad decision. Let's honor this veteran. He defended this country, he's kept the West Mifflin ROTC program, not viable just here in West Mifflin. Like Jake said before, he was honored at our midwinter conference. I'm State Commander to VFW. I had the honor of presenting him with the VOD Teacher of the Year Award. And now I got to come here in my own school board to defend this man, a veteran? I'm sorry. The state of Pennsylvania, we have 60,000 veterans, and he's one of them. I will defend him for my last breath because he does right for the kids. Why are we all here? We're not here for me, you, we're here for the kids in the back, right there, and the future kids. So thank you very much again for your time and effort, and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.[754.50][754.50](Applause). Harry Thompson?
Harry Thompson, 6679 Adams Avenue. About three years ago, you had the guy that handles the sound system over at the high school and the auditory and that stuff come over here and fix these speakers and all these mics and that stuff over here. We need, people played with the switches up there and knobs. If you, if you could send him back over for two or three hours and maybe get this system working, because I was here at the council meeting.
This one?
Yeah. Council meeting, couldn't hear half the people, well, half the speakers in the back weren't working. But when they talk on the mic, instead of talking like this, they're talking like this, you can't hear them. I told them use karaoke for that, like you're doing karaoke. But anyhow, and my next subject is, here, here's an opinion I have. When you guys have a major decision coming up, instead of deciding it amongst yourselves, you should each go to 15, 20 people of, people in your constituents in your area, ask them their opinion, because you're basing it on your narrow vision of things. If you ask 10 or 15, 20 people in your area, get their opinion, it would help you make a better decision, in my opinion. I told that to council and they just turned into marble on me. But hey, I'd appreciate if you guys would consider that and talking to people that, you know, you're supposed to be representing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harry.[837.13][837.13](Applause). Gene Stout?
Thank you, school board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
Please state your name.
My name is Gene Stout. I live at 716 Blueberry Street, West Mifflin. And I, again, I thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I am a combat veteran of the Vietnam War, and we know how our veterans were treated when we came back. Spit on, treated lousy. Now, this country's tried to make up for that, but old wounds don't heal the way we think they do. And when I heard about Sergeant Diservo, after 19 years of giving of his efforts along with Major Harbula to this program and creating what I have seen him create, I have personally been involved with him for 15 years. As a chaplain of Post 914, I do the prayers at the military banquet. Every year, I am astounded at those folks that are graduating and what they plan to do with their lives. The military is one thing, but some of these people are going to go on to do great things, including the two members that are coming here to take over this junior ROTC program, and one of which is from this area. So I was very disheartened when I heard that you were not going to continue to renew his contract. Now, I understand that nothing can be talked about here at this meeting. I very rarely come forth, I know Debbie Kostalnik very well, I very rarely come forth. I've lived in his borough since 1975. Son went to school here. I rarely come forth. This is something that got my attention, this is something that helps me, that has me upset. When I think that we would not renew this man's contract for one more year after 19 years of dedication to this program, and four school districts came to us and asked us how they could start their junior ROTC program, and we would then not renew this man's contract so he can train the two other people that are going to take this program over, so we can see this thing continue on in the way that it's been manufactured and preserved over these years. I would hope that all of you would reconsider what you're thinking about doing, including all the school board members. I would ask that you would reconsider and renew that contract for one more year. I let this person go out with, with grace, as he well deserves, not just for his military career, but for the dedication that he has had to the West Mifflin Junior ROTC as a teacher, as a mentor, as a provider for the good education that these young people have received. There's an outstanding group of people that's graduating this year, and there's other graduating members that'll graduate next year. They're even down to the eighth grade now. This is what we need. We need some discipline, we need some help, we need to stop the violence and craziness that goes on. You wouldn't see these young men and women doing those kinds of things out there because they've been trained by the military. So I want to thank you all very, very much for your time tonight and letting me speak here on behalf of Sergeant Diservo, my good friend. Thank you. Thank you very much.[1033.38][1033.38](Applause).
Kristin Davis?
Hello, my name is Kristin Davis. I live on 140 North Third Street, Duquesne, Pennsylvania. I'm a four-year cadet of the ROTC program, and since freshman year, I can say I have helped out Sarge a lot. You know, we, you know, a lot of times, I help him out, first, first one in, last one out. Sarge is very impactful, not only to just me, not only to the cadets in the back, but to the community as a whole. He is a very impactful person. 19 going on, 20 years, he's done a whole bunch for the community, and, you know, when you're promised something, when something is written down on a contract and you sign that contract, you should be given that contract. Even if you have to start a new contract, if you have already earned an incentive, that incentive should be given to you on the next contract. Trying to take it away is just extremely offensive, in my opinion. You know, it's like if someone offers y'all an incentive and you sign a new deal and the incentive's gone, I'm sure you wouldn't appreciate that, and, you know, I'm, it's, I'm sure he's, you know, with, him being Sarge, it's probably not even about the incentive, it's the principle. He was offered, not asked, he, he didn't ask, he was offered the chance to get early retirement incentive, and it was taken away from him. It's, it's, you know, offensive, it's rude, it's disrespectful, and for everything that this man has done, he deserves that incentive. He deserves a lot more than just a retirement incentive because of just how great he's been to West Mifflin. And, you know, that, that's my piece. I just hope you reconsider and give this man what he deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.[1150.26][1150.26](Applause). Dean Spade?
Hello, I'm Dean Spade. I live at 2210 Vermont Avenue in West Mifflin. I'm a current third-year cadet and the current commander of the West Mifflin Air Force Junior ROTC program. Most people are here tonight because of the same reason I am. Sarge has affected our lives in one way or another. Sarge has taught me and many other cadets respect, discipline, and how to be a leader in school and their community, in life in general. In today, society, in society, kids tend to lack these important skills due to phones and electronics. I personally know what it entails to run this JRTC program with new instructors taking over the program. Sarge would like to acclimate these instructors so that they can properly take care and keep the legacy he has been running for 19, almost 20 years. In 2021, you guys voted and gave Sarge this incentive for early retirement, and I think it is the right thing to... You promised him this incentive to retire early, and taking away is not the right thing to do. So if, if you go back on, on your word, what you, the school board, and Dr. Solz, our superintendent, teaching these kids of today's society, so what keeps Sarge from one more year with this promise you originally made him? Thank you.
Thank you.[1240.51][1240.51](Applause). Lorenzo Smith?
Good evening. I am Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Lorenzo Smith. I live at 824 Heneman Street, Duquesne, Pennsylvania. I am the current executive officer of PA 20031, and as a cadet in Senior Master Sergeant Diservo's unit, I've never seen him stop working. Every day, he's doing one of three things. Teaching us in the classroom, in his office, doing enough paperwork for two or three people, or he's at home doing that paperwork because that, this job is that important to him. One thing I truly admire about my instructor is you'll never see him complain. Just today, he's walking in with smiles and shaking hands, not worried. No matter the situation or the workload, he will always have a smile on his face and get it done. If Sarge does not get no year here, I lost my place. We will be given one or two new instructors who will not get any help besides a succession plan. But if Sarge is able to stay another year, he'll be able to walk these new instructors through the inner workings of our unit, as these veterans probably have not been instructors before, they will need someone like Sarge. Our unit does not function without Sarge. Roughly half of our unit wants to leave the class if Sarge does not get no year, which would put us below the Air Force standard of 100 cadets in the Cadet Corps. It is imperative that Senior Master Sergeant Diservo is able to get what he deserves after 19 years of hard, continuous work, both the principle of the matter and for West Mifflin Area High School's AFJ ROTC program. As a young leader, I would never do something as outrageous as this. If it's in a contract, it is in a contract and it is signed. If this school board can do this to a distinguished veteran and 19-years-old teacher, who are you going to do, do this to next? A custodian, a cook, or another teacher? This is not only the right, this isn't right, not only for the fact that Senior Master Sergeant Diservo, but for the fact it can happen to anybody, and it shouldn't. What's promised is promised. Thank you.
Thank you.[1293.33][1293.33](Applause). Beth Pinkowski?
My name is Beth Pinkowski. I live at 109 East First Avenue. Most of the kids that are here are from my kids' class. I have two graduates of West Mifflin and graduated from Sarge's ROTC program. I have one that went to the military, one that went to college, all because this man supported them, mentored them on what they could do with their life, taught them leadership, taught them empathy for everything. Both my boys were color guard commanders. For six years, we did this with Sarge's support. Now, you don't want to give him the year to train the new people? Are you even thinking about the kids? Are you thinking about your bottom line? These kids, past kids, future kids, current kids deserve the respect that they, you expect from them. Sergeant Diservo has been loyal to this school, loyal to these kids. Why don't you try to find your loyalty to him and these kids? You all voted in this, right? This is not your main job, that's fine, but you think about these kids. Giving them the respect that Sarge can show the new people how it works, the inner workings. This is not like replacing an English teacher, a science teacher, and they're just as important. My father was a teacher, I believe in teachers. They don't get paid enough and they put up with too much crap. But the junior ROTC program is completely different than an English class. This has different ideals, different details. The new people, you want them to feel supported in their job? You let them get trained the right way so that they can feel they do their job to the best of their ability. Don't think of your bottom line, think of these kids. And think of these kids' parents that pay the taxes in this school district, but also will pay attention to what you do for our kids. Because my kids may not be in the school, but I know other kids in my neighborhood that are in this school, and I will talk to their parents, too. Thank you.
Thank you.[1329.33][1329.33](Applause). Claudine Walasek?
Claudine Walasek, 332, 3325 Lincoln Avenue, West Mifflin. If you see my hoodie, the back of it says AFJ ROTC Mama. Three kids in this program. My last one is a junior, he's just recently been promoted to captain. He really wanted to be here to speak, but he is representing our district in the state orchestra this week, so he is away. If you look at what these kids learn, loyalty, respect, discipline, I never forced any of my kids to go into this program, and every single one of them has come out on top. Promotions, every single one of them has worn their uniform proudly. My son's a junior, he could be wearing ABUs, he, he wears that dress blue every uniform wear, and he wears it with respect. Sarge has, has just done so much for this district, for this community, for the kids, and he should get what he was promised. I mean, if it was voted on, it should be, it should be a done deal. I just, I don't understand how we can go back on, on something that was voted on. I mean, who, who reneged on that deal? Does anybody know what PA 20031 is? Anyone? That is our unit number for the AFJ ROTC program that Sergeant Diservo has started and run. My son has spoke to these other school districts that ended up starting programs, and it's just fair's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.[1355.33][1355.33](Applause). Jean Staut?
Thank you, school board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
Please state your name.
My name is Jean Staut. I live at 716 Blueberry Street, West Mifflin. And I, again, I thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I am a combat veteran of the Vietnam War, and we know how our veterans were treated when we came back. Spit on, treated lousy. Now, this country's tried to make up for that, but old wounds don't heal the way we think they do. And when I heard about Sergeant Diservo, after 19 years of giving of his efforts along with Major Harbula to this program and creating what I have seen him create, I have personally been involved with him for 15 years. As a chaplain of Post 914, I do the prayers at the military banquet. Every year, I am astounded at those folks that are graduating and what they plan to do with their lives. The military is one thing, but some of these people are going to go on to do great things, including the two members that are coming here to take over this junior ROTC program, and one of which is from this area. So I was very disheartened when I heard that you were not going to continue to renew his contract. Now, I understand that nothing can be talked about here at this meeting. I very rarely come forth, I know Debbie Kostalnik very well, I very rarely come forth. I've lived in his borough since 1975. Son went to school here. I rarely come forth. This is something that got my attention, this is something that helps me, that has me upset. When I think that we would not renew this man's contract for one more year after 19 years of dedication to this program, and four school districts came to us and asked us how they could start their junior ROTC program, and we would then not renew this man's contract so he can train the two other people that are going to take this program over, so we can see this thing continue on in the way that it's been manufactured and preserved over these years. I would hope that all of you would reconsider what you're thinking about doing, including all the school board members. I would ask that you would reconsider and renew that contract for one more year. I let this person go out with, with grace, as he well deserves, not just for his military career, but for the dedication that he has had to the West Mifflin Junior ROTC as a teacher, as a mentor, as a provider for the good education that these young people have received. What's promised is promised. Thank you.
My name is Beth Pinkowski. I live at 109 East First Avenue. Most of the kids that are here are from my kids' class. I have two graduates of West Mifflin and graduated from Sarge's ROTC program. I have one that went to the military, one that went to college, all because this man supported them, mentored them on what they could do with their life, taught them leadership, taught them empathy for everything. Both my boys were color guard commanders. For six years, we did this with Sarge's support. Now you don't want to give him the year to train the new people? Are you even thinking about the kids? Are you thinking about your bottom line? These kids, past kids, future kids, current kids deserve the respect that they, you expect from them. Sergeant Disserbo has been loyal to this school, loyal to these kids. Why don't you try to find your loyalty to him and these kids? You all voted in this, right? This is not your main job, that's fine, but you think about these kids. Giving them the respect that Sarge can show the new people how it works, the inner workings. This is not like replacing an English teacher, a science teacher, and they're just as important. My father was a teacher, I believe in teachers. They don't get paid enough and they put up with too much crap. But the junior ROTC program is completely different than an English class. This has different ideals, different details. The new people, you want them to feel supported in their job? You let them get trained the right way so that they can feel they do their job to the best of their ability. Don't think of your bottom line, think of these kids and think of these kids' parents that pay the taxes in this school district, but also will pay attention to what you do for our kids. Because my kids may not be in the school, but I know other kids in my neighborhood that are in this school and I will talk to their parents too. Thank you.
Claudine Walasek, 332, 3325 Lincoln Avenue, West Mifflin. If you see my hoodie, the back of it says AFJ ROTC Mama. Three kids in this program. My last one is a junior, he's just recently been promoted to captain. He really wanted to be here to speak, but he is representing our district in the State Orchestra this week, so he is away. If you look at what these kids learn, loyalty, respect, discipline. I never forced any of my kids to go into this program and every single one of them has come out on top. Promotions, every single one of them has worn their uniform proudly. My son's a junior, he could be wearing ABUs, he, he wears that dress blue every uniform wear and he wears it with respect. Sarge has, has just done so much for this district, for this community, for the kids and he should get what he was promised. I mean, if it was voted on, it should be, it should be a done deal. I just, I don't understand how we can go back on, on something that was voted on. I mean, who, who reneged on that deal? Does anybody know what PA 20031 is? Anyone? That is our unit number for the AFJ ROTC program that Sergeant Disserbo has started and run. My son has spoke to these other school districts that ended up starting programs and it's just fair's fair. Thank you.
Gina Cato?
Gina Cato, 4318 Francis Street. How many board members or administrators up there are veterans? I didn't think so. My son was very ornery growing up. In high school, he joined the JROTC. It changed his life. He learned a lot about loyalty, respect, discipline, and being a man of his word. He learned this from Sergeant Disserbo. He is now a state trooper for Pennsylvania. Sarge is the one who also gave him a recommendation to the State Trooper Academy. Years later, I stand here as a grandparent of an Air Force JROTC student under Sergeant Disserbo's command. My grandson has always been quiet and kept to himself. I can't explain the difference in him in these last few months. Sergeant Disserbo has made an impact on my grandson. How would you like to see your family, your, how would you like to see your family members have something promised to them in writing and taken away? How about we take Mr. Souls' salary away and see how he likes it?
Hello, everybody. I didn't plan to speak. I actually left work.
State your address, please.
My address is 957 Goldenrod. I live in Lincoln Place in Pittsburgh. I'm a West Mifflin resident.
You're a Lincoln Place resident, you're, you're not allowed to speak.
I'm not allowed to speak, but I was chosen, you guys called me.
Who called you?
I was just called.
I just called you because I didn't realize your address wasn't in West Mifflin.
Okay, so it doesn't count that I went to West Mifflin, I was a graduate, four years ROTC program. You guys want to let me speak?
No, I mean, under the sunshine act, you have to be a resident or a taxpayer.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that. So, real small story, I graduated West Mifflin, four years at the program. I'm actively a police officer, city claretton. It's not something I advertise every day. I left work early to be here. A little nervous, I, I talk to so many people all the time, but whenever I'm speaking under pressure, it's like, hey, you know, gotta say everything right within a couple minutes. Couple minutes don't justify what one man has done for so many years. So I was on my way here and a guy had an issue with the car, so I had to help him off the road and I thought to myself, I had to be on this meeting on time and I didn't plan on speaking, you know, but I just wanted to be here and support. I did what he would do for anybody in this room and he'd help anybody, any, any minute. And I get emotional, you know, I mean, I got two minutes, I'll calm down for a minute. I'm never like this. The, the thing is when someone changes your life and like I'm thirty, gone thirty-one and I, I don't ever get emotional. Anyone knows me, I don't, I don't tear up or get away. But he's done so much for the community and, yeah, guess we all got feelings, huh?
I think that says it all.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm very emotional about it, you know, and, and the short version is, like I said, I did a lot with the program. One of my classmates, Leo, went to school with him, we did ROTC, we did recruiting. The thing with ROTC program, it, it spread like fire everywhere. Where he started, every school knows about it. Every involvement with who he is, where he's at, what he does for the community, you think just West Mifflin, but he does so much more after hours. It's unrealistic, no, no one can fathom what he does after hours for the school district and/or the program. So, and I'm in West Mifflin a lot, I own a business, it's pretty successful as well, excavation company, so I'm up here a lot paying for permits. So, so that's why I was like, oh, I don't live here, but maybe let me speak. I spent, yeah, I don't pay taxes, but I pay my permits. You get check on file. I will say one thing about the program as far as the integrity, being proud, like, you know, people mentioned about wearing the uniform, I loved wearing that uniform. I, I looked forward to something, like that week, that one day you can look sharp in front of the whole school. Not everybody in the school understands the program, but not everybody understands what it takes to stand out, to be different, to set a standard, right? To be the change that people don't want to change. Everyone likes a normal, you know, but having a program and having what he might have been told, pulled out underneath of him, if you guys told this man that agreed initially that he should have one more year with the program to help the transition to other instructors, that's very important. That's very important. Training, training's everything and be able to take what he'd done over all these years and put it to the next group of guys, that's not just impactful for the school, that's, that impacts people, the trainers, being the new two instructors coming on. I mean, I still, I still do business with this gentleman. I mean, we're friends to this day. He, you know, he does way more than just ROTC, just way more than all the years that he'd done in the military. This ain't someone to ever disrespect, you know? So that's all I gotta say. Like I said, I got a little, I got a little worked up because, I mean, I mean, look at
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I've never attended one of these meetings or anything before. I saw I only have three minutes, I...
If you could just state your address, please.
520 Maple Street, West Mifflin, PA.
Thank you.
So knowing that I only have three minutes, I had a pretty long and hearty speech, but I don't think I'm gonna get that in three minutes. So I'm just gonna speak a little bit from the heart. As a former alumni cadet, I commanded the program, I was cadet lieutenant colonel, I ran the program under Sergeant Disserbo and Major Harbiola. And I heard what had happened and I just figured I'd come and address y'all and have a little speak about it. Sarge has done so much for his community in this program. The Air Force has a core of values. Excellence, sorry, getting a little worked up here, just like he said. Service before self, excellence in all we do, and integrity first. And Senior Master Sergeant Disserbo has done that time and time again. Since the time he swore his oath of enlistment, he has served this country. Upon leaving the Air Force, he didn't take that uniform off, he brought it to our community. He's helped numerous students that aren't even cadets. Cadets succeed. Anybody who needs anything, he is always there for them. I, myself, am a Marine Corps veteran, I went to the Marine Corps, as much as he tried to get me to go into the Air Force for all those many, many years. But I was hard headed, but I loved my decision nonetheless. Most people, you get told, do the bare minimum in your job, that's all that's expected of you. This man, between his private businesses, his school, the VFW, he goes a bumpy on in everything he does. And for me, as a veteran, a community member, an alumni, former cadet commander of this program, personal friend to this gentleman right here, when I read that remark, I was disgusted. Nobody deserves this, whether it be a veteran or a civilian. And I realize I have more time to talk and all that, but to keep, to keep it all tactful and not go into my Marine ways, I'm just gonna end it with that and I hope y'all make the right decision. I really do.
Did he save me for the last?
Not quite.
Okay. Diane Stenesek, 2803 Gleny Lane Extension. Two items on the agenda that I wanted to address on page two. Item six, the 460 computers, where is the money coming from to pay for those? Second item, page five, under Buildings and Grounds, Community Arts Festival done by the Community Foundation. It's my understanding that they're not paying anything to do this. Are they paying for security guards? You tortured the youth basketball league by charging them for security guards, the rent for the, for the gyms and they had a wonderful program of over 350 kids and had a wonderful day of playoffs, some of which were down to overtime and winning by one point. So I hope that comment that was made to me, that they're not paying anything, is not true because that is not fair to any other organization that is paying to use the facilities. The other thing is, that I want to address is, I don't know, and I think you all should be following the Castagna appeal in the federal courts. I know you're not gonna comment on it, but the point is, I have been tracking that since it hit the appellate court. And if you go in and you read some of the garbage appeals from that insurance company, to me, they're getting practice in being in front of an appellate judge, okay? Start looking at the stuff and seeing what they're doing. This has gone on long enough, let's move on and get this school district back the way it's supposed to be. Now, as far as the sergeant is concerned, I had no intention of speaking about this because I didn't know anything about it, but I'm here to tell you, I've been a resident in this district since I was born in 1953, so do the math, I'll be seventy in June, okay? I actually voted for the ROTC program when it was first brought to the school board nineteen some years ago. You can probably pull the records up because I was here. I've been attending meetings for probably about forty, forty-five years. What you're doing to this gentleman is a disgrace and as a retired nurse, I understand training for people. And if you want this program to succeed and to be the way it was, under his rule, then you will do the right thing. Thank you, Mrs.
Jay Grossick?
Jay Grossick, 1610 Greensprings Avenue. I'm running for school board. I am a male who does not have children. This was brought forth by a school board member, why that has any bearing on why I'm running. I'm running because every year, everybody complains about same people, same people. So I threw my hat in the ring just to see what would happen. Now, school board members, Ms. Engle, she made comments that I feel are biased and prejudiced and why, I don't know, I didn't ever do nothing to her. I don't know if she's actually pointing out me, but according to her comments, so I would suggest that you look at the comments and maybe have her removed for being biased and prejudiced when we don't really need that on our school board. I've been a lifelong member, I, I mean, I'm born in this city, in this borough, same as Diane, I was born in 1954, okay? 1973 graduate of West Mifflin North. I have a right to run for school board. I don't, I shouldn't have to defend myself against allegations like that. And the other one she makes against the president of council and the other board member, they're also basketball coaches, they coach their kids. So what's wrong with that? Just because they have other jobs? I just, I just don't agree with her comments and I feel that something should be done to get... Thank you.
So, so thank you all, everybody who came up and spoke on Mr. Disserbo's behalf and thank you, Mr. Disserbo, for coming and speaking tonight. Or Sergeant. Thank you for correcting me. I just want to say that, you know, we recognize Sergeant Disserbo's contributions to the school district and his legacy. We recognize that. We are going to, in earnest, do what we can to make an agreement, to come to an agreement. We want to bring Sergeant back to school. We want him to see the, see the program through, to train up the new people and we're gonna work in earnest to do our best to make that happen. So, thank you all for coming.
I just want to say, I just want to say, I've known Sarge a long time. Many, I mean, every time I come up to this campus during the day, evening, afternoon, on a weekend, I always see Sarge around and Sarge and I have talked many times. I have great, great respect. I had, one of my, one of my children went through your program, Melissa, and so I have nothing but respect. So I just want everybody out there to come up to the microphone, I'll be real honest with you all. Only thing I can say to you is, you know, when we talk amongst ourselves, we have great respect for Sergeant Disserbo. We have great respect for him, okay? But, stop, stop, please. I'm just, I understand where you're coming from, we've heard it. I'm just saying, we have great respect for him, okay? And we have heard a discussion. Now, one other thing I just want to say was I was very touched by a lot of what everybody said and I had great respect for Sergeant Disserbo. You know, somebody wrote a recommendation letter on your behalf and I'm not gonna comment on it. I was gonna comment on it, but I respect for you, I'm not gonna take away everything that these people have come up to the microphone and talked about you. So I'm just not gonna comment on that because I don't think any respect would be just to you. And, and the other thing I want to make a comment on is, you know, I hope we can, I would like to see, you know, around another year to train because this has been a very great program and recognized not just here in West Mifflin, but regionally and everywhere else. So I just want to thank you for your service, I really do.
Thank you.
And just so you know out there, and I understand, when, when Mr. Grossick came up here and talked about, you know, a single man with no children, there's a lot of folks on this board, single men, Mr. Squires, Mr. Mattis, Mr. Donahue, you know, and I don't look at them as dimwits, okay? And that's what these folks were called and I think it's wrong and I agree with you, Mr. Grossick, you owe them, you owe them an apology.
No, we're good, we're gonna move on. This is, it's not productive anymore.
We're moving on.
But we thank all of you for showing your support for Sergeant Disserbo. Thank you and for your public comment, thank you. Five information items, there are none. Six, Board Secretary Business Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I respectfully ask a motion, second, and approval on the following items. Under six, A, Board of Directors, those are numbers one through seven on pages one and two. The answer Mrs. Stenesek's question, the computers are gonna be bought out of Esser money. Number five is...
Do you want to hold off? Yeah, hold off on a sec, until everybody can excuse themselves.
I didn't see it, somebody said it in the background and saw that it came, it didn't come to me, it said incorrect address or something. Is she anti my program? Oh, okay. I have it on my mind, I was... Well, it's... I don't know. I deserve it. Oh, and, yeah. But her uncle... Stuff that comes to my school this program...
Now, we're getting there. Thank you. Mr. Esper, do you want to start over again, please? Number six, Board Secretary Business Manager's Report.
Okay.
Mr. Esper?
Yes, sir. Okay, under six to eight Board of Directors, that's numbers one through seven on pages one and two.
Now, we're getting there. Thank you. Mr. Esper, do you want to start over again, please? Number six, Board Secretary Business Manager's Report. Mr. Esper?
Yes, sir. Okay. Under six, A, Board of Directors, that's numbers one through seven on pages one and two. One through three was discussed last week. Number four, to answer Mrs. Stenesic's question, those computers are gonna be bought with ESAR money. Number five is new. This is Resolution 2023-03. This is Act 57. This is gonna require tax collectors, including delinquent tax collectors, to waive penalties, fees, interest, and other charges for homeowners who purchased their homes within the prior 12 months, and they did not receive a tax bill in the mail. Act 57 was signed July 21st of 2022 by Governor Wolf. And this applies to tax bills that will be sent out this year. Number six is new. This is permission to advertise an invitation for bid for removal and replacement of the high school stage floor. And number seven was the addendum item.
Which is that? High school LGI room?
Yes, the LGI room.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Squires. Second by Mr. Donahue. Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes to all, but number four.
We don't want computers?
We don't want computers.
Okay. Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
And Blazevich?
Yes.
Under six, B, Finance, we only have one item, and that was discussed last week, and nothing has changed.
Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern. Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Number six, C, Purchasing, that's numbers one through 12 on pages two and three. Item four is new. This is something we do annually. This is just letting the board know when we're gonna open up the bids for supplies, and that's May 1st, at 10:00 AM here in the Administration Building. Five through eight was discussed last week. We did touch on number nine. We did get a new agreement with Precision HR for this upcoming school year, and that will include an optional two-year extension with no increase in pricing. Number 10 and 11 were discussed last week, and so was 13, I mean, so was 12. Mr. Souls, do you want to talk briefly about the-
That's the agreement for our before and after school program with Champions. I know Mr. Squires was interested in that topic. So we finally got the agreement.
Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion by Mr. Donahue? Second by Mr. Uhas? Questions or comments?
Can you clarify the power school codes? When they're all four individually?
Power school is our SIS system, where we house all the student information.
Correct.
So the first one's the Enrollment Express, that's for student enrollment and informs, and it also works with the, with the PIMS system, with the data. ScholeG is, that's the system.
I use it every, we use it all the time.
Yeah, you know, and then the, and the SIS management, Enterprise Management Service is, I'm not quite sure what that is, but it makes it all work.
I think these are all software licenses.
Yeah, these are all software. We renew them every year.
I didn't know if it was different for different grades, if it was as a whole.
That's the whole pack.
I got you. Thank you.
The one thing I wanted to add and say, the first one with the state date validation, that's the one that our PIMS coordinator uses. She makes, she actually generates funding for the district through that one. So that pays for itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You said 13, Joe. I think it's 12, right?
Yeah, 12. Yeah, I corrected myself.
Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes. Seven, Financial Reports.
Those are letters A through E on pages three and four, and nothing has changed from last week.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kastounik? Second by Mr. Donahue? Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yeah.
Kastounik?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
I have eight invoices, bills payable, and purchase orders. Those are letters A and B on page four. The only addition we have from last week is number seven. We did receive an additional bill from Legal Tax Service for filing fees.
Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
Second by Mr. Squires. Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. District Operations, Mr. Souls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under District Operations, we have items A through C, C being the Addendum, to increase the lifeguard hourly rate to $14. And also P was new, and that is the agreement and job description with our confidential administrative assistants.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kastounik? Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Ten, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, Mr. President, we have items A being the homeschool visitors, through E as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Uhas. Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
And Blazevich?
Yes to all, but 10D 125.
Which one?
125, uh, B.
10D 125. 11, Professional Personnel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have two items, A and B, as presented, sir.
Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion by Mr. Donahue? Second by Mr. Mattis? Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
12, Non-Certified Personnel.
Yes, Mr. President, items under A through C as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Engler? Questions or comments? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
And Blazevich?
Yes.
13, Athletic Personnel.
Yes, Mr. President, we have two items, A and B, as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kastounik?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue? Questions or comments?
What is the other?
That was the other as a volunteer.
Volunteer. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Ahern?
Yes.
Donahoe?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Mattis?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Uhas?
Yes.
Kastounik?
Yes.
And Blazevich?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Souls.
Thank you.
14, Board Presidents' Correspondence, there are none. 15, Executive Session Discussion, legal and personnel matters were discussed in executive session. Board reports, many board reports and committee reports were given last week. Any committee chairs want to give another report?
I have Steel Center.
Any committee chairs? No? Okay. And we'll have the Steel Center report? Thank you, Mrs. Kastounik.
Steel Center is participating in the Technical School Education Day event scheduled on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the east wing of the Capitol Building in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. We are one of 20 career and technical schools from across Pennsylvania that will be participating in this event. We are taking six students and two staff to attend the day's activities, including meetings with, including meetings we have scheduled with six of our state legislators, and a special meeting with our Lieutenant Governor, Austin Davis. The two West Mifflin students that are attending are Jaden Colorado and Make Hill Poindexter, Health Assistant from West Mifflin. And I need to apologize to Make Hill because I've been mispronouncing her name all year. So my deepest apologies for that. Our Student of the Month awards are Zane Versetti, Automotive Technology; Tyler Schmidt, Building Trades; Dakota Daniels, Cosmetology; Austin Anderson, Culinary Arts; Renine Galua, Public Safety. The National Technical Honor Society's final battalion blood drive will be on May 9th, 2023. Please consider stopping by and making a blood donation.